Morning, I'm going to call the one of the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five Commissioners Meeting. Have there any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm going to move and accept the agenda as presented.
Discussion, hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment, is there anybody here this morning that would like to make a public comment? Can you see anybody online? Hearing them, we'll move to approval minutes.
I'm going to move to approve that minutes at the April first, two thousand twenty-five. Commissioners meeting is presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone's here on organized territories?
Has anything changed with the these permits?
It's a pretty change.
The change is, the only change is the speed limit changed from fifteen miles an hour up to twenty-five miles an hour. That was a request from the clubs and I kind of think it's a good idea on these roads. By increasing the speed of the ATVs, it may keep the traffic well a little better, keep gas or trying to pass them on the roads.
And that's the only change?
That's the only change.
Any discussion, do you want?
I'm going to move to approve the ATV user permit agreement for Rocky Mountain Trail Riders for ATV access to Taos Road.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm going to move to approve the ATV use permit agreement for Rocky Mountain Trail Riders for ATV access to Maider Road.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to move to approve the Martin Ridge Road paving.
So this is your specifications, Miller?
I would add the state of the town.
Did they do the Martin Ridge?
We're doing that right now.
Okay.
Bid deck.
Yes.
Yep, will you go?
Well, one page is a year to go to the other. Then that is the instructions to the bidders and the specifications for the paving project. The bid proposal form. And then there's two pages that are the agreement that we will sign with the, three pages of the agreement we'll sign with the contractor.
I forget, when's the, the bid due back in June, is that what it is?
We're having a Free bid nineteen today. Free bid meeting the nineteenth of May, the bid posters on the twenty-seventh of May and will be open the twenty-seventh of May and Commissioner Paul voiding the first meeting in June.
I'm going to move to approve the Martin Ridge Road paving, bid pack is presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is the bank road nine into the Lower Letherton Pond Road that needs some work? And if we paid that, we could build these two at the same time, we might get a better bid price.
And we're going to pay for this, how, Miller?
The Mantridge Road, we're going to have to pay from A floor out of our road, instead of account.
But, that road we can
That road is in a different account.
Different county?
Yeah.
I don't know why we wouldn't at least entertain bids.
See what it comes in at.
You think the same bidder would bid on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you've got what's
Through with the trial, we can always reject it if it doesn't work.
Should make that a separate bid.
You have to make it a separate bid, but it, it might, it might work in a way.
That's not paid, some of it's paid, isn't it?
It used to be paid, and we ground it. And now, over the years, the snowplow has pushed most of it off into the ditch and we're getting down to to a point where the snowplows had decided to pick up the big chunks of pavement from underneath.
Bridge.
The bridge, every, every time the state has inspected it, they go around every five years and do an inspection on these bridges. And that bridge has passed inspection every time.
So, are we going to pay over there?
Yes.
Pay for it over there, back on Route nine?
Yes. No, I wouldn't pay the whole loop, I would just pay from, from Route nine up to the Lower Letherton Pond Road. The other end of it, from Lower Letherton on back to Route nine, we haven't done anything until that was kind of grown in.
It's not even possible now.
Well, you could get through it with an ATV.
So you're going to start when you turn left down
Yes.
Misses.
It's about a half a mile.
Is that a public vote access?
Yes.
No interest in favoring to the public vote access.
It's private road.
Private road, yes.
The way you turn on background, it's private road.
Is a good reason. Okay, you have your instructions, Chris, and we'll go on.
Come on, Tim, what? I'm just bringing back the discussion we had during the contract negotiations to bring the administrative staff levels up to the same rate as the union contract.
And right now you're getting what?
Six, so sweet, additional three percent.
Three percent?
The total for all three is adding to be seventy, eighty-seven dollars a season.
Are they retroactive, definitely?
That's up to you, that's what, that's what, if we did three, that's what's off the menu.
That's what the ask is.
Oh, that's what the ask is, yes. What's, bringing up the speed, Sam, traditionally we have brought the department heads up to the same percentage increase raise that the union employees got, because they're now covered by the union and and we have consistently done that, have went I don't recall not to do it, Tim.
We've always done it with the jails since I've been here, that's all I can say.
What, have we done it with RCC?
Not with me, no.
No.
But I'm willing to
Attack on it.
If I could, real quick, I mean, essentially, i- if this is going to be like on, because last year was the first year that it really went off scale and there was a change beyond for the jail, I think it was. So, if it's going to be an ongoing thing, then perhaps what you need to consider is, is looking at creating a new scale for them. Otherwise, kind of open up Pandora's box, because everybody else that's on the non-union scale, other department heads, everybody else going to say, how come the jail's getting nine percent now, but we're only getting six percent? So, and I'm not trying to complicate this, nothing against the jail and all, I'm just trying to present that those are the issues that are going to come up, just like you literally just heard with our C C, not that any other department heads wanted to make a fuss about it, but they could and say, look, that's not what the scale says that you put in the budget, so what are you basing that upon? And that's obviously out of all of you, but I mean, I think if it's going to be ongoing, then this next budget cycle, we might want to look at how we incorporate that into their own administrative jail, non-union administrative scale and remove that from the other one.
Presently, they're on the non-union scale, correct?
I, I don't think they are.
Well, they're not, yeah, they're, they're on a, the
No, I'm sorry, I'm talking about you.
The administrators?
No, we're not, they're, they're on, but they're off, right, because we adjusted for it, so they're still based on, so we don't have a separate administrative scale right now. We have the non-union scale, but they're above that in a way, because they were given or requested last year, basically approved of the adoption of the budget, the additional percentage last year as well. So they're really already a step above everybody else, but they don't really have a scale, and we put in the budget payroll section when we calculated, it says right on it, off scale, but it's still part of that.
Michael, is it possible to go back and compute a step that give them the equivalent of three percent raise for the effective, whatever, you know what I'm saying? So what happens is they get back on the non-union scale at some step, and that step provide them for at least a three percent for the year, knowing maybe a four percent increase now, what we made effective now, see what I'm saying?
I believe so, do you, but I don't know if
I think they're already off scale.
Yeah, I mean, they're definitely off scale, so
I know that, but I'm wondering, given the rate of pay, no matter what it is, can we find a rate on the scale, at a step that would give them, satisfy their request, get them back on to the non-union scales?
We would just have to like compensate even more, so it would be a pretty high, I don't know if we could get, I mean, we can look at it, obviously we have talked about it, but because to get them back onto the scale, we have the three percent now, plus whatever the difference was last year, which had to have been on, assuming a minimum of three percent anyway, do you remember, Monica?
I would have to look at that and see where they fall.
So you'd have to almost add, add it, so it'd be another five to seven percent at least, I would say, to get it back on to
There's only a five percent increase in steps. Hypothetically, then, we'll just say hypothetically, they're getting thirty dollars an hour. And they could get thirty dollars and fifty cents an hour and get them back on the scale, and that would give them a four percent raise now, which would equivalent to a three percent raise for the year, you know what I'm saying?
I know what you're trying to call it, I think we just got to run the number to see how, how that
I'm just trying to respond to your complaint that they were off scale. Is there a way here to accommodate their request and at the same time get them back on the scale?
Now, without having to adjust the scale beyond the three percent, I don't see that there's any way we could do that.
I don't see
Try to move them up there. So, now the scales, like I think I know what you're looking at, you're looking to move them, if they're nine, move them to a, if a ten justifies that.
No, I don't want to lose grades, I want to lose steps. Get those, get you to a step that would give you the increase that satisfies you and gets it back on to this non-union scale, which is the issue that Michael's raising.
Technically, you'd be okay, because they're just getting that percentage, but you still would be at a higher percentage difference than other department heads. But in terms of like where you're at, that's just a percentage, it's not a scale that you're paid to now to the, to your assistant and the other one, I mean, those two obviously adjust for it, but I, I mean, Shepherd's close to the end of the scale right now, right, so yeah, I don't know, we'd have to look at it again.
So
Because the reach is, I'd take my name, I just look in for Shepherd and cross.
Well, you're easy though, because you're not on the scale.
Right.
You're not, he's not on the scale, right?
No, no, technically, he's just giving the percent increase based on
So you're easy to deal with, Shepherd, CCS, TCO. That's, trying to, how important is it, Michael, do you think, to get it back on the scale? Easability?
Well, I mean, I think the reality is, is how it is philosophically where you go in the future, because if you're going to every year continue to make these adjustments based on where you end up negotiating with the union to keep the administrative ahead, then you're going to have it every year, so each year you're going to come back to us and say, well, now you're going to add another step, or you're going to add another step. So it'd be hard to keep them on unless you're applying it to everybody and you just adjust everybody out.
Problem is, is that that's bad, because if the SCC gets a six percent raise, the jail gets a five, and the SO, it's a three, you know? What do you do with the family?
I mean, and that's why initially I said the easiest way maybe is to adjust or create their own scale. But, then you do have to, again, it just opens up the argument, do you do that with other areas as well? Or are you just going to assume in this case the jail gets the difference, or else the ones will be whatever you agree upon as part of the budget? And I'm not trying to complicate it, again, it's nothing against that, it's just that if, if we did it last time, and I don't know that we really had a long discussion about it as part of the jail budget, we just kind of went through what you were proposing there. And then, you know, when we're trying to implement it, and then also now develop the budget for two thousand twenty-five that we're in right now, it just creates basically a, a double issue, because you can't do it just at the flat percentage and still get those three back on.
Maybe we could just have you look at what it would look like if we developed the scale, the new scale. And then we could also just see what happens if we try to like create it within existing. Just to kind of see what the difference would
Okay, so just leave this off for two weeks.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, I mean, we're talking about that in a retrospect, but I'll, I'll keep checking with Mike to see how, see if we're ready in two weeks. Whatever happens, Tim, in my perspective, accommodate your request best we can, what they do for the year, but maybe a few more weeks before we do that. Okay?
Yeah. And your second part of that discussion is the jail admin to be able to use the same verbiage in the union high degree of our sick time bio.
They're basically just selling the sick time.
Selling the sick time up to a hundred dollars twice a year. If anybody do it, but
Present, presently they don't have that ability, correct?
We're just trying to, you know, stay within the same agreement with Commissioners, the union staff.
Because I'm not understanding what you're asking, is this in, in regards to the weekend differential?
Nope, nope, the weekend, right now the contract this year, June and December, if they have, union staff has over a hundred dollars sick time.
Okay.
They can sell up to, they can sell down to a hundred dollars.
Okay.
We're just seeing if they can follow within that same
Does any other unit have that?
No, this is the first time that this has been brought up in the union, that I know of, no, that's the first one.
This is the first time we put this into a contract?
Yes.
You're talking for the administration?
Administration, they have a sector, so that same, following the same guidelines.
It's not, current personnel policy, correct?
Correct.
So you'd have to, I mean, you can go off this, but then you kind of have to incorporate that in the policy going forward, again, or again, this would be another issue, you're opening up to everybody and just writing all into the policy, or you put it in the policy and then writing in, I guess, for the jail.
Again, we have discussion in two weeks, we can put some of that together, plan this together, but
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, with the, so, I'm just reading that contract.
If you have any questions about the weekend differential, see that's on here.
The one?
B. I don't, I have no issue with it, I mean
You don't feel, come back with language, as you
On, on, get those two on but
So on the weekend, I
Yeah, everything's good. We're just going to let it go at this point?
Yes, yeah, we're only going to do the overtime.
Or base it on the overtime, if somebody has it, for For the weekend differential.
They get their on-call time. Oh, you, oh.
Yeah.
Now we're on a whole different thing, okay, there you go.
That's what I'm trying, yeah.
When did that come?
Okay, yeah, weekend differential, this is a whole different thing, this is all about. You agreed to stipend of fifty cents per hour. To paychecks and payroll services, we need to now pay time and a half if people are working overtime, the contract was, it's just the people that are scheduled to work, was getting the fifty percent, the regular night shift group. They worked overtime, they were not going to get that, that was the rationale I took from the conversation we had with Joe and the union, but the contract, paychecks, people say that we have to pay the differential on everybody working, working overtime as overtime rate.
If the contract says only regular pay
It's just all hours work. So the contract's right.
So I mean, I, I'm not sure at this point how we adjusted any other way other than going back to the union and say the way that this was written has unintended consequences, and are you willing to adjust the language accordingly?
Whatever, no matter what hours they're working, that differential gets added to their hours, so if some of those hours are overtime hours, the differential gets added to the overtime as well.
So it becomes part of the rate, becomes part of the rate of the pay.
Right.
Well, I understand that.
That's it.
But, if somebody, if, if a regular employee has to work a weekend shift, they get, they get a stipend, they get this different
Fifty cents per hour.
Fifty cents, but if an employee elects to work an overtime shift, they're getting time and a half, and they don't get the fifty, fifty cents.
No, they're getting the fifty cents based on their overtime rate.
Why are they getting the fifty cents if we only want it to apply to those on the regular?
That's what, that's what we're bringing to you, because
We didn't specify the language, I believe.
The specification, the language contract says all hours work from, it doesn't say, you can't rule
Always says all hours, no matter who works
Right, all hours. And you know, it's not the law.
This is too, this is too complicated, you bought it, because it's not a lot of money. I still contest that that's the case, because they're, they're treating effectively pay time and a half to these people as overtime. It's not, it's, it's a premium pay for working extra shifts, because that's not an overtime shift. There's no reason we can't pay the time and a half to add fifty cents to that.
No, I think the paycheck's legal and hour legal, I think, all the way.
And not just that, I mean, it literally spells out that that differential, and part of it, maybe just the language of differentials, but it I mean, I went through, I spent a lot of time last night, again, just rereading everything, especially when you guys did differential, it's, it's clear, clearly spelled out, but it's not an exception, it's not an exception to that rule, which then makes it have to be calculated right.
And you're talking about mandatory F S L A time and a half. We don't know what mandatory F S, F S L A time and a half is, because we don't keep track. So it, it could very well be that these people working the weekend as an overtime shift are not working overtime, they don't understand this app. They're treating it as if they were working overtime, and if they are, I agree, you'd have to give them time and a half, or five dollars. But and considering the sick time is taken up there, I don't believe that very few of them ever get into the mandatory time and a half, because for every day you take off, that takes straight time for every time you work an overtime shift, but anyways, it's too frigging complicated to, to fight over this few dollars, so
I just want you to know, that is, it is costing us more than we like, it's a lot of money, but nickel's a nickel, so
It's like thirty or forty dollars a weekend rate that it's costing us.
If somebody was.
See, I haven't seen the numbers.
Yeah, I would say it's like ten to twelve dollars. Yeah, ten to twelve dollars is average. Indicate, yeah, if you really, wouldn't exceed above ten, is what she, what she's seen so far.
Ten additional?
Ten, ten additional, per whoever, but it doesn't, you could have some weeks with two, you could have some weeks with three, so it varies.
I just want to bring attention to that, it's, it's not how we all discussed it during the thing, that's over, all through the contract.
All right, thank you.
Wait a minute, did we make a decision on the weekend differential?
Well, such a hard to fix. And so, just, I think the decision says it's too hard to fix, but
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How it goes is, so we take it out next round.
Secret is, it's
May this morning.
Davis. I seek this morning to create oversight from the last meeting where we approved a transfer the doorwork up at the jail, but did not approve the job itself. So I'm seeking to approve
Okay, we'll move to All right, I'm going to move to approve the quote from Exactitude as a sole source provider for the replacement of the security door near the Sallyport entrance at the jail, for a total cost of eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and to authorize the chair to sign the quote on behalf of H K company.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Kevin, I have a fresh copy. It's desired.
Well, I signed it last time.
You did, yeah. The date's the first.
Oh, I, I know, I started that copy. I, I started that one.
Yes, we don't let you copy.
Good afternoon, you, a proclamation recognizing dispatch staff for National Public Safety Appreciation Week.
I'm going to move to approve and sign the proclamation and recognition of the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week as presented on.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We hold this with you?
Let me take it downstairs.
Anything else, Paul?
No, sir.
All set? Raise your hand.
Stand up, on my knees now.
We have, it's not Robert Dur, representative from the Chi Savings Bank, and of course, we can't live on this lowly four point five percent interest rate that we're, that we're currently getting for much longer, so
Good news is, we did end up being ahead, so we picked the right option last year, or for the last six months anyway, so but as you saw, yeah, on, on the sheet, we gave you a couple of different options that they're offering right now. One is the fixed rate option of three point eight five, and then the other option is basing on the T bill. And we gave you a copy of some of the printout of what the T bill was, and and lately now, over twenty-six weeks or so, I think that's three around four percent.
Yeah.
Well, says that rate will change effective first of April?
Well, it should, it should, it should have gone into effect the first of April, right?
But she, she was going to hold it for a couple of weeks at where it was until we came back to her, so we're scheduled to meet with her again.
So it became really slow.
But the thought was we'd regroup with her at the end of the month. Kind of like give her an answer, one way or the other. I would go towards a fixed rate on it. Personally.
So what you're saying is that they don't honor this three point eight five rate, even though they said it would change on the first of April?
No, that's what the new rate will be.
They'll honor the three point eight five percent. They'll change it whenever we make the decision to, to change the rate.
Okay.
And it'll either be three point eight five percent fixed or this T bill, which can vary.
They didn't estimate what those rates would be.
Well, she provided you the list. Basically, the T bills, her thought process was, but again, this is even in the last couple of weeks since we met, you know, things have changed at the global level as well. But her thought process was, we looked through the T bills over the history of the last four or five months or so, that they're pretty consistent. So the risk is less and it would be something else. Maybe what we would have invested in the past. I mean, obviously, we have a limit that has to how much or the type of items that we can invest in anyway, but the difficulty is, is obviously, who knows for sure what'll happen to the market. But right now, starting out based on historic numbers, we'd be earning a little bit more. But if the bottom dropped out and everything went really, really haywire, then you could all blow that three point eight five.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. What is your recommendation? You have one?
Uh, I, I don't have a recommendation. If I had to choose, I would probably go with the fixed rate option, just for safety, safety wise, but uh, it's hard to know what that, what the T bill is gonna look like.
I mean, honestly, all things being equal, a normal type of market, normal environment, I would lean more towards T bills and say, you don't have to worry about it, but I just don't know, you know? I mean, I look in a crystal ball and say, I don't know.
But is this, is this our available funds? What, what?
This is interest on our checking, fourteen checking, checking accounts. Not all of them are interest there.
But if we bought T bills?
They, they do it, they do the investing. We're not, it's, it wouldn't be handled.
So you're asking like the liquidity of that, right? So basically, you, you leave the money there to, to go towards paying bills.
Yeah.
How would you use it to get them out?
And what's the answer? If you have decent T bills, how difficult is this?
See, I don't know, I don't know enough about T bills.
Well, I thought once you bought a T bill, you had to wait for it to mature before you lose your, will you lose your interest?
Most other investments.
They do more than I do, I don't know.
That's usually how it works. I mean, we obviously can ask her before we entertain that, I guess, to be a hundred percent sure, but it was my understanding the rates weren't going to adjust except like on a monthly basis for those if there was change. But whether or not that locks us out.
I don't know.
I mean, usually in those cases, that there's a penalty, the penalty is just the interest that was lost that took off from not having the money in there. But I mean, I don't wanna, we didn't specifically ask her, which is probably our bad, but.
Why do you think you wouldn't need this one? How much of this you're going to put in a T, if you did the T bills?
So some of this is almost like our normal processing of extra funds, right?
Are these just extra funds? And if these are extra funds, why are we, why are we talking?
It's not, no.
Not entirely, no.
No, I think it's, I, see, I, I guess I have to find out more about the, how the T bill works.
I'd like to know more about what money we're talking about. I mean, how could we have money to invest if we're talking to an tax anticipation note? Do you guys understand the situation? I don't understand what money we're talking about. What, what cash, what?
This is just our regular accounts, right?
Right, right.
It's our regular checking accounts that they're paying stuff out of.
Right, and it just gets invested and you earn, you earn the interest on those investments.
I would just say, I'd do the fixed rate because if I was gonna run my crystal ball, I'd say the rates going down is done now for my opinion, obvious reasons. And you should lock it in while we can.
At the three point eight five?
I think it's going someplace, it's not gonna be going down or it's gonna be going up or. But that's my thought.
If you figure it's, well, just fixed.
Well, yeah, I guess I hear what you're saying, interest rate.
Oh, we can move back and.
I hear what you're saying, you're right.
We can find out more about the T bill investing.
I mean, that's my, my basic understanding, but I wouldn't swear to it, so.
She must not be offering you something though that would tie your money up.
I don't think so.
No, I mean, as I understand it, it's basically, it's almost like, you know how she wants to get you into a suite? It's almost like that, is the way that I understand it.
It's a daily invest.
So.
A daily invest and then you, whatever the interest is, you get the interest.
You can adjust accordingly.
She's giving you the T bill rate.
Yeah, you're not tying, you're not tying up your money.
T bill rate minus point two percent as well, just point zero two percent on that sheet. Yeah, that's the way I understand it, but not enough at this point, I guess I'd recommend it.
I was actually thinking of our loan that we were doing for our our, uh, are we doing a?
TAM?
A TAM.
Tax anticipation, that's what he's saying is.
Can you assess your TAM?
Don't know if it goes in the bank.
What are we talking about?
So I'm guessing a TAM from UT, but.
Or, but given the most recent information.
That's abat収, can you do that? We, for what? So yeah, from the, from the, from the, uh, jail.
You know, and I think the way, I mean, again, I still haven't seen the actual.
If we don't get a legislature, doesn't set the state budget until November, I may need but money out.
Exactly, which is why we've changed our, or at least that's why kind of the philosophy is, it's gonna make sense to go back out again. Because not only are we gonna have that, you've got jail money, you've got a whole bunch of other funds now that, that could possibly not be coming at all until after November. Sometime in November.
Sir. Nobody knows what's gonna happen.
What's the November date?
So that's when the election, so if they get enough signatures to basically the citizen petition, then basically the budget for the state that was approved or adopted is frozen until after the election, the first of November. So state municipalities, UTs, any of those that rely on state funds, those funds after July first won't be available to be given to various entities from the state. And the feds, who know where we're at with that, so. Our county commissioner association meeting I sat in thought that that was gonna be a steep hill for them to gain, but I don't know, I mean, given the current environment, I would think they could find enough people that might be interested, depending on how they, you know, so that, that's why I, as of yesterday, I shifted back to, let's get those numbers from Charles and stuff, which they started working on and like that. And I'll have to go back to the banks on that, so.
What did we have prior to, is that a fixed?
Yes.
It was fixed. It was fixed.
Four point five, right?
Yes.
Not before that, it was like five point four last year. So two years ago, or about a year or so ago.
I got the same reasons for the label, this is correction, what you do. You're still, you're still on the fixed, John?
Somebody asked, I was thinking a bit wrong at the moment, I was thinking about our loan actually.
Oh, oh, that you were thinking this was.
Yeah.
We can find out more about the T bill, if you want.
I just can't believe that she, she would offer us an investment that we tie up.
No, that's right.
Operating here.
That's right.
So I, I don't believe that's the case.
No, I don't.
I honestly don't believe either, but no.
What she's, what she wants us to tie up our operating money for six or eight months.
No, that's right, that's right.
So you do have an opinion, fixed or?
Well, the risk, how does, what do we get for the risk? Is it worth a risk?
So right now, with the, whatever the difference is between three point eight five and whatever the rates are that we'd be getting for those.
T bills, yeah. But I mean, what does that equate to in money?
Right at the moment, it's four percent, right? It would be adjusted each month according to the current thirteen week T bill minus point two percent.
So.
What do you think the estimate of the money is that we're gonna be investing? I mean, how much that point one five percent?
How much is it gonna net you? And some of that, I guess, depend on.
This is only a six-month cut?
No, 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 this is our, this is our interest earnings, so this'll be kind of set in stone for at least a year. Unless we go with this variable rate option, then that'll change each month. But right now, the three point eight five percent would be our earnings interest rate for about a year.
Or three point nine nine, you can take a T bill right now.
Right.
How often do they adjust the rates?
Once, once a month.
Once a month?
Yep.
And how long are we locked in the T bill system? How many, how long? Yeah, that's okay, let's get that. How long, if we decide to go T bill, how long are we locked in that agreement?
I don't know if we can make a monthly decision to, to change that, I'd have to ask Barbara.
The way that I understood it was that we were looking at basically like another six months commitment, but and then that would be addressed, I think, yeah, towards the end of the year.
Well, today, if the three point eight five versus three point nine nine tomorrow.
She did give us.
Depends on what about, it's legendary.
History of. Yeah.
Want to gamble?
Yeah.
All right, Matt, I think, do you have a motion for fixed rate?
Yeah.
Thank you. Have access to the T bill rate even if we didn't, no, even if we didn't take it? Would you have access?
Oh, I think you probably could, yeah.
All right, I'm gonna move to access the six-month fixed rate option of three point eight five percent as presented by the Chi Savings Bank.
I'll second that.
Are we committing ourselves now to six months by this motion?
With, with that particular motion, I would say yes.
Is there any way to craft a motion that just says?
To get rid of the six month.
Get rid of the six months, we'll just take that and.
Receive of the fixed rate option, something to that effect, and then.
To be reviewed. All right, we're gonna move to accept the fixed rate option of three, three point eight five as presented by the Chi Savings Bank.
I'll second that.
All right. A call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna oppose and ask the clerk, check the rates, let's discuss this in six months to see what, how wise our decision is.
Okay.
If that's a big deal.
No, I'll see what I can do. You're trying to do some forecasting.
No, no, I would, I would do this. Thank you very much.
Was there something else?
Thank you.
Michael, while you're there, any comments?
Uh, any comments? Just a couple of other things that we'll bring up, and then I was gonna ask while we're all right here, am I included in this event today? I didn't know how big your vehicle was, or am I?
Did you have some weight, travel?
No, I picked up.
I think you'll see.
I just wasn't sure what the commission intent was, I guess, so.
Well, we, last time we went, we took it.
It's hard to describe, yeah. I mean, it'd be nice because I haven't seen some of these, but I just didn't know what your expectation was.
So I would, you would let you sit in front. The keeper, say in the middle and the fat guy's gonna be the bookkeeper.
All right, that's all I have.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Stevens, you have any? Uh, as public has been notified, the media, a probate judge's license has been suspended. We need to have some kind of update and whatnot, extended speeding on that situation.
Yeah.
Whether it's public or a technical session with the judge here and so on, so we have already been asked by the media what we can do with that, so.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Now, are we adjourning or are we, what do we know here? We're, we're really.
So at the meeting portion, I mean, how these have been traditionally treated is it's a, like a, this meeting will adjourn from this meeting, and then it's like basically a public workshop technically. So if there were members of the public that wanted to come, it'd be, they'll ride with you, but they could follow along or whatever. So. Uh, and then it's a public workshop, but it has been advertised, obviously, on the agenda. I did talk with Jennifer Osborne, she asked me about it because she thought you were doing it last week, and I explained to her, and I also gave her all the information that's on the agenda, so. I mean, technically, the local newspaper is aware that you're gonna be having this drive along as well, so.
Okay, so we'll have, intitiate a motion to adjourn and then move on, went to a workshop on UT, went to adjourn. Motion's made to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Discussion, hearing them all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.